I'd like to call this meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to give the opening to Counselor Michael Swakstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in the 1990s, I joined the Columbia House Music Club. By signing up, I agreed to buy several CDs at full price. In return, I received a bunch of free CDs. It seemed like a good idea at the time. I got even more free CDs when I convinced other people to sign up. However, there was a catch. Every month, Columbia House would send me an unsolicited CD. Unless I remembered to send it back, at my own expense, by a specific date, I would be billed the full cost. It was a classic example of negative option billing, where you are assumed to have bought the product unless you proactively decline it. This was how Columbia House and other similar clubs made their money. They knew that plenty of customers would forget to send back their CDs. Let's just say that I terminated my membership at the earliest opportunity, and so did many others after they realized what they had signed up for. Most people strongly dislike negative option billing, and for very good reason. By putting the onus on customers to opt out, there ends up being a lot of accidental purchases. This might be great for the company, but it's terrible for consumers. Negative option billing was bad enough with CDs. Now picture it being used in end-of-life medical care. In 2016, the Canadian government legalized assisted suicide, now known by the euphemism MAID, for people whose death was reasonably foreseeable. However, it didn't take long to expand MAID's eligibility to the point where MAID is now one of the most easily accessible medical procedures in Canada. By spring of next year, even people whose sole underlying medical condition is mental illness will become eligible for MAID. Some medical practitioners aren't even waiting until next year to offer this procedure to mentally ill patients. For example, on June 2nd of this year, Catherine Mentler went to the Vancouver General Hospital suffering from a mental health crisis. To her shock, the clinician asked Mentler whether she had ever considered MAID. The clinician then went on to describe MAID as a more comfortable process than dying by a drug overdose. Incredibly, when this story hit the media, the Vancouver Health Authority did not deny that the conversation took place. Rather, it claimed that the MAID discussion was simply a tool used by the clinician to assess the risk of self-harm. However, this so-called tool apparently didn't work very well since Mentler left the hospital in greater distress than when she had arrived. Sadly, this is not the only time that this sort of thing has happened. We all remember last year, when we heard about a number of veterans being encouraged to try MAID after they asked Veterans Affairs Canada for support. It's shocking that anyone would think that this was an acceptable way to treat our veterans. Given how quickly the eligibility criteria for MAID are being expanded, and how comfortable some medical professionals are bringing it up with patients, it becomes entirely plausible that MAID will eventually be routinely offered to everyone. I shudder to think about the conversations that might someday take place in some personal care homes. Will we reach the point as a society where MAID happens by default unless we specifically opt out? I certainly hope not. But then, few people thought that MAID would become as widely available as it already is right now. The current trend does not bode well for the future. Negative option billing was a lousy way to sell CDs, and it's even worse way to provide end-of-life medical care. Life, not death, should always be the default option. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Swakstra. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for motion to adopt. Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Siemens, any comments? Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counsel, we have the minutes of August 1st, 2023, the regular council meeting in front of us. We've all had a chance to review, looking for motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, seconded by Counselor Hebert, any comments?
No comment.
Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We are at 7:35, so we'll go directly to 6A, the public hearing. This is bylaw 2234. This is referring to 385 Lowen Boulevard. Counsel, today we'll be doing second and third reading. Starts on page 5 of your agenda package. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Bylaw 2234, for property civic address of 385 Lowen Boulevard, is being applied for by Jack Kaler, Care of Bethesda Wellness, Inc. The owner of the property is Steinbeck Campus Foundation, Inc. Purpose of bylaw 2234 is to rezone a portion of the subject property from DR1 Development Reserve 1 to EI Educational Institutional to allow for the subdivision and development of future healthcare facilities. Notices, as are required by the Planning Act, have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file, other than correspondence received from community planning, indicating generally they have no concerns with the application. Recommendation from administration is that bylaw 2234 be given second and third reading, subject to any new evidence presented at the hearing, and subject to the owner entering into a development agreement with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. I will ask if the applicant is present today. Okay, seeing no one, I will ask if there's anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file. Seeing none, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Swakstra. Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a parcel of land, and that is a subdivision, has been divided, and it's for future healthcare facilities. This is a second reading, and it's, we need a development agreement, too. Just a little bit of background, this property is, was donated by Melvin J. Lowen and his wife Elfrida to the Steinbeck Campus Foundation. It was approximately 60 acres of land, and specifically for the institutional and health and educational purposes. So, the Eastman Education Centre was built, which now houses Red River Community College on the site, along with the current medical facility. And they have, the Bethesda Foundation has been managing that land through, together with the Steinbeck Campus Foundation. So, it is a good project, and it has done well in the city of Steinbeck, and this would be worthwhile to, again, allow this to happen so that they can continue to build more healthcare facilities in that area.
Thank you, Counselor Siemens. Anything further, Counselor Swakstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, I'm certainly happy to support the motion. I should note that this is consistent with our official community plan. This land is designated institutional policy area, so the rezoning matches that. We're certainly very pleased with the development that's taken place in that area, the Stonebridge Wellness Centre, Bethesda Primary Care Centre, and having more healthcare facilities is certainly something our growing city needs, and so it makes sense to allow the rezoning. I look forward to seeing the development proceed.
Anything further, counsel? Anything in closing?
Just one thing further. Developer would we respond for the heritage parkway, extending it along with all the services required, so it'll be a good thing.
Yes, counsel, I think it's a great fit for the area. There's already healthcare facilities there, and also with education with the Red River Community College right on Lowen Boulevard. So, I think this is a plus for our city. I'll call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counsel, go directly into third reading, looking for a motion to approve third reading. Counselor Hebert, seconded by Counselor Hebert.
Nothing further to add.
No, thank you. Nothing.
We'll go directly into the question, call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counsel, move to 6B. This is variance V 2023-13, referring to 28 Spruce Crescent. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing, and, Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This public hearing is to hear variance application V-2023-13. The applicant for the variance is Rockwind Builders LTD, with the owner of the property being Clara Kaler. Purpose of the variance application is to permit an east side yard of two feet, whereas a city of Steinbeck zoning by law 2100 requires a minimum of four feet in the RLD residential low-density zone. Owner, owner's intention is to develop, in addition to the existing attached garage. Notices, as are required under the Planning Act, have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. Recommendation from administration is that, subject to any evidence presented at the hearing, that counsel approve the variance application, subject to professional lot grading plan being provided that is acceptable to the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Workteen. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Do you wish to speak?
Um, there should be a correction. I'm not adding.
Okay, you'll have to come to the podium, because everything's taped. And state your name and address, and then...
My name is Clara Kaler. I am the owner of 28 Spruce Crescent. There is a mistake on the, I'm not planning an addition to the garage, I'm planning a garage addition to the house.
Okay, okay. It's just a wording error. So, it's just, it's just, so you're, you're planning a complete garage, not just an addition to the garage?
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay, nothing further?
No. Glad he's here to answer any questions.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll, what I'll do is I'll ask if there are any comments, questions, or objections, and then we'll see where we go from there. So, are there any comments, questions, or objections to this file? Are there any comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll ask one more time. Are there any comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, I should ask, is there any questions of counsel on this file? No? Okay. Then, at this time, looks like, Mr. Unger, you're off the hook. You don't have any questions to answer, so we'll, I'll close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Hebert. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a reason that we do have side yard setbacks, and the main reason for, two reasons for that is privacy to the neighbors, as well as drainage. And then, with, with that, there's, that has been shown that the neighbor has no issues with this, and there will be a requirement that the drainage is up to the city's standard once it is completed. So, both of those are off the table, and the variance can be approved.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at the site, and the two feet, I think, will work out well, because the neighboring house from the boundary is well over four feet. So, I think there'll still be plenty of space between the two buildings, and I have no issue with it.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing further.
Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, counsel, we'll move to 6C. This is variance V 2023-14, referring to 284 Lowen Boulevard. It's on page 30 of our agenda package. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Mr. Mayor, the variance application file V-2023-14 is being applied for by Tom Penner. The owner of the property is Maplewood Manor, Inc. Purpose of the variance application is to permit an accessory building to be located within 10 feet of the front property line, that being Lowen Boulevard, whereas City of Steinbeck zoning by law 2100 requires all accessory buildings in the, the subject zoning to be located a minimum of 25 feet from the front property line. Notices, as required under the Planning Act, have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. Details as to the existing shed that is on site and the proposed shed to replace it are provided in the agenda package. Recommendation from administration is that counsel approve variance application, subject to the removal of the existing shed.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Is the applicant here tonight? Do you wish to speak on this, or?
It's stated as, as we request.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for the applicant? Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I will ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Hebert?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Swakstra. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have here is an applicant, Maplewood Manor, applying to have a new shed built where there's an old one, the old one will be torn down. Ordinarily, I would object to a variance that close to the property line, but in view that this is a shed, and it's not a permanent, it doesn't, it's not a permanent building, I don't have an issue with it. Well, it's, it's a shed on a, on a foundation or something, but it's not some huge building that could never be moved, should we decide to expand Lowen Boulevard or something like that. So, in view of that it's a shed, I don't have an issue with it.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem with the variance. A couple of things here to note. First of all, our, our staff are recommending approval, so they're not raising any concerns. We also don't have any objections from the neighborhood, and we're simply talking about replacing an existing shed that's already in that location with one that's, that's a little bit larger. So, I see no problem with moving ahead with the variance.
Thank you. Is there anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing further.
Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, counsel, we will move to 7A. It is just a little bit past 7:45, so it's, it's well timed. We have a delegation today. This is Daniel Bandman, is referring to Town Square Statue. So, we'll call down you, Daniel Bandman up to the podium, and, and you can proceed with your presentation.
Fantastic. Good evening, mayor and councillors. My name is Daniel Bandman. I'm a representative of the Robert D. and Joanne S. Bandman Heritage Foundation. Our foundation was established in 2008 to recognize Steinbeck's history. The foundation was involved in projects such as the Millennium Clock Tower and the large mural depicting Reimer Avenue in the 50s. I'm here to introduce the latest project, which is a statue commemorating the Ruslander migration of Mennonites to the Steinbeck region between 1923 and 1926. My great-grandparents, Jacob and Barbara Bandman, were part of the Ruslander migration. They arrived in 1924 and 1926, respectively. My grandfather was aboard the vessel, The Empress of Scotland. He arrived in Montreal on the 2nd of October, 1926, at eight years of age, along with his mother, father, three sisters, and his brother. Being the 100th anniversary of the migration to our community, we thought it would be an ideal time to commemorate this key part of our local history. We hope the statue will also pay tribute to all the people who have had to flee their home countries and settle in our region over the years. It's important to recognize that exactly 100 years ago, after the Ruslander migration, people are also escaping the same region to Steinback under the exact same circumstances. The statue itself is bronze, and it's nine feet tall. It weighs around 1,800 pounds, and it depicts a young family that was forced to flee their homeland. The statue will be located in front of the Millennium Clock Tower, as seen in our scale mockup. We hope to have the statue in place by October this year, at which we, we plan to have a formal dedication ceremony. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the project, and I'd like to thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Daniel Bandman? It appears you've given a, given a great presentation. Thank you so much, and I do believe that you are correct. I think a statue like this will commemorate for your family, but not just your family, all the families that have come here and given up so much to immigrate and to start again in Steinback, and, most recently, with, with many of the Ukrainian families that have come, and, and, and how they're, they're being integrated into our, into our community, and, and working hard and starting all over again. And I think this will, this is, this is a great thing for our Main Street. It's a great piece of art to have downtown, and I thank you so much for, you and your family for coming forward with this, and, and, and just commemorating such a milestone in your family's life, 100 years being in Steinback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Moving on, we have no reports of, or recommendations for city manager. So, we'll move to 9, administration, 9A, accounts payable. Back of the book, we've all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any comments?
No comment.
Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We have 9B, bylaw 2223. This is a local improvement, 2023-04. It's our third reading. Counsel, it's on page 41 of our agenda. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bylaw 2223 and local improvement plan 2023-04 was originally presented to city council earlier this year, and specifically, it is a bylaw proposing the authorization for the city to borrow up to an additional $5 million, which can be used towards the event center construction project. The municipal board of Manitoba has reviewed the city's application and proposed bylaw, and has approved it under Board Order Number E-23-042. And as such, city council may now give this bylaw consideration for third reading. With respect to, to this bylaw, it was proposed with the intention that, in the event that the city of Steinback would require contingency funding to complete the project, that these would provide additional funds to do so. And at this point, the proposed annual borrowing cost over a five-year period is expected to be no greater, I'm sorry, than, as noted here, as no greater than 7% annual interest. And recommendation from administration is that bylaw 2223 be given third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swakstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a third reading of this borrowing bylaw. As we know, the costs for the event center had, have gone up significantly from the point where it was first announced to, to now. Couple months ago, we had passed a resolution authorizing a bylaw to borrow up to an additional $5 million to the event center, to build the event center, if necessary. Obviously, this had to go to the municipal board for approval. It has now gone to the municipal board, the municipal board has approved it, and so that money is now available if we do need it. And so, this is just simply the final reading of, of a borrowing bylaw that we had put in process several months ago.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an example of administration, and then us as council being proactive. As Counselor Swakstra noted, these need to go to the municipal board for approval. So, this way, we have the approval from the municipal board already and available to take the $5 million, if necessary, for moving forward on the event center.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel? Anything in closing? Yes, counsel, I, I do believe it's, it's wise to be prepared and to be ready. As you, as you can see, the, like, our, the money's all in place. This is just a contingency fund. We are hoping not to have to use it, but we do have to be ready in, in an event that something does go, go, go in such a way that we might have to dip into it a little bit. But we are hoping for the best, and that we don't have to use it. Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We have 9C. We have building permits for July 2023, on page 51. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel, Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Hebert. Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Well, as noted in previous months, we're having a really strong year, particularly with commercial, commercial building, and it seems that family units are also starting to increase a little bit. So far, we're at 69. So, I think in a difficult year with inflation and interest rates and that sort of thing, I'm happy for whatever we can get in that area, but overall, it's just a very encouraging, very encouraging year so far.
Anything further, counsel, you heard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to add that you hear of things slowing down in a lot of regions, and it seems like in Steinback, things are just keep on going. Like Counselor Penner said, commercially, it's very, very strong, and it's good to see.
Anything further, counsel? Anything in closing? No. Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counsel, we got 9D. We got the business licenses on page 52. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, seconded by Counselor Swakstra. Any comments?
No comment.
Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, 9E, we've got minor subdivisions, starting on page 53, goes to 54, 55. On 55, we have a motion, looking for a motion to approve the minor subdivisions and variances. This is from January 1st to June 30th. Counsel, would you like to proceed? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are minor variances that administration takes care of in-house, and then comes to us to ratify as a whole. I don't see anything that sticks out as to why it shouldn't have been, shouldn't be ratified, so.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
See the contention.
Okay. Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, we've got 9F. This is the Seine-Rat-Roseau Watershed District. This is expansion proposal. Counsel, according to Counselor Hebert, it looks like the arm of Morris is finally wanting to amalgamate with the Seine-Rat-Roseau Watershed District, and the district is looking for our approval as well. So, if we go to page 70, there is a motion, and they're wanting us to ratify this motion in our council. So, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert?
Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Swakstra. Go ahead, Counselor Hebert.
Over the past couple of years, the province of Manitoba has been pushing a number of municipalities that are not in a watershed presently to join a watershed. And now, with the incoming funding that's been received by the watershed, there's been a push by farmers and taxpayers in different municipalities to get on board and join a watershed. And this is what's happened here with Morris. The people in the area are putting pressure on Morris to join the watershed, and now there is a, a move by the council there to join Seine-Rat-Roseau Watershed. So, we're happy to welcome them on behalf of the watershed, but also, I believe, on behalf of the council here.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Counselor Hebert has made a compelling case for approving this motion.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Okay, counsel, on the recommendation of Counselor Hebert, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Counsel, we've come to the point of counsel question. Is there any questions of counsel tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We've got 11E. This is the Manitoba Justice Public Safety Division. This is the Urban Policing Policy Grant. This has been, this has been talked about. This has been, this was announced earlier in, in July, and this is, this is great news for us, because it does increase our provincial funding component for RCMP by 28%. How would you like to proceed, counsel? Take this as information?
Please.
And we've got 11B. This is also Minister of Municipal Relations. This is the Strategic Infrastructure Funding Support. This, this was also, this announcement was made in Gimli, I think exactly two weeks ago, and we have, or no, it was last week in Gimli, on Tuesday, and this, this is a great piece. The, the part that we're talking about now, the 1.35... The, the part that we're talking about now, the 1.356 million, is, is per capita, it's tied to population, and it was given to municipalities outside of Winnipeg. Now, there's a second component to this, and that is $44 million has been put aside for extra infrastructure projects in 2024 that can be applied for. So, like, there's, the, the province has really seen the, the need in, in our municipalities because of the price, the pricing of our projects and the increased pricing of construction. And they're, they're recognizing that, and they're helping out, and I think this is great. But at this time, I just recommend we take this as information. And then, 11C, we've got the Minister of Sport, Culture, and Heritage, and this was earlier this year, we did apply for extra funding for the, the rec center, and it did come through with an extra $1 million for our Southeast Event Center, and this is the letter confirming that from the Honorable Obi Khan. So, again, counsel, I'd recommend we take this as information. Okay, thank you. There's no other business, looking for a motion to adjourn? Oh, can we?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion? Okay, last meeting, we forgot to excuse Counsel Hebert, so we will do that now at this point. And Counsel Siemens would like to make the motion.
I'll make the motion to excuse Counsel Jake Hebert for missing the last meeting.
Okay. Second by Counsel Swager. Okay, call for the question, all those in favor.
Including those.
Opposed, that is carried.
Don't let this happen again.
Don't let us forget you again. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Hebert, Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner. Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Next regular council meeting, Tuesday, September 2023.